And we are live on Channel 8 and TCTV's YouTube channel.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order. It is 5:00. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Ms. Geister has a flag for us, so we'll stand to the pledge. A pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
The United States of America.
To the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Into the Republic. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I wanted to announce that this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by Templeton Community TV. It's out on the cable station and on the YouTube channel and Facebook page will be available after our meeting as well. And shout out to TCTV for making that possible. This evening, there will be no public comment because we're just going to focus on the budget this evening, but we'll take public comment on anything that anyone hears or sees tonight that they have questions on. You can either email them to Central Office to Mrs. Barney, or you can call the Central Office if you have questions. And we'll have a public comment period at our next meeting, which is February 17th for our next school committee meeting, and that is a change in the date. It was originally the 10th of February, it's now the 17th of February. So with that being said, we will go right into our FY22 budget discussion. There were some documents that Emery had sent out to everybody. There's a line item budget and some income sheets that we'll go over tonight. I think I'll just do a quick preview and then turn it over to Dr. Kazavant and Emery to get into more. The governor did come out last Wednesday with his budget numbers. We have numbers for Chapter 70 distribution and the cherry sheets. There was also some interesting guidelines given out by the governor with regard to the ESER 2 grant monies that will be issued and our ability to utilize some of those funds as an offset to increases in the town's minimum contributions. So I'll put that out there and we can discuss that more as we start talking about these numbers. To no surprise, we are in hold harmless, so our Chapter 70 number, even though our October 1st numbers went down year to year, being in hold harmless, that put us at an even amount for funding from year to year. Their bonus aid in the Chapter 70 formula, $30 a student, and that equated to, I think, about $30,000 or so of funding, wasn't a lot of money. And other than that, there really wasn't any huge surprises. I don't think, at least for myself, and again, I'll let Chris and Emery, if you want to add your comments and thoughts in after. I think the biggest surprise for me in the takeaway was the increase in the MLCs to our towns that in times like these, that the burden that the state has shifted to the town by increasing their contribution did go up quite a bit. I want to say Templeton's minimum contribution goes up about 140,000, and Phillipston's goes up by 50,000. So, you know, that's significant for both towns. So that did, I hate to say it surprised me because nothing surprises me, especially from a negative standpoint, and I hate to say it that way. But it was maybe more disappointing that there wasn't some more relief given to maybe the municipalities as they looked at the funding package. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Chris and Emery to talk us through what was sent out, and then we can get to questions and comments. For the record, though, I will just go over who was on the call, and I apologize for not doing that sooner. For the school committee, we have Mrs. Kozel, Mrs. Chartier, Mrs. Robichaud, Mr. Marx, and Mr. Mason, who joined us, I'll say like at 5:02, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. I believe that Mrs. Trifilo and Mrs. Mattson will be joining us shortly.
She needs the link, Mrs. Trifilo.
Oh, she needs the link, okay. I only have one screen tonight.
It's in the calendar invite, but I will resend it to her.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have Dr. Kazavant, our business manager, Emery Geister, and Susan Barney, Admin Executive Assistant Extraordinaire. So with that being said, as we know, Mrs. Trifilo will be joining us shortly, and I see her connecting now, so we'll add her to my list.
Thank you.
5:05.
Couldn't find the link amongst them all.
Well, good to see you.
Thank you, Margaret.
And Mrs. Mattson, as I said, is slowed down by the weather. She's commuting, so she'll join us as soon as possible. So with that being said, I will turn it over to Dr. Kazavant and Ms. Geister.
What I'm, I think what we're going to do is I'm, I am getting the documents prepared to show. So if Anne Marie will do the talking, at least at first.
Yeah, so I'll start talking. So while you're getting those ready, I'll talk about the ESER grant. So ESER Part 2, as everyone is referring to it, is our second grant from the stimulus monies that was coming from the feds. So Narragansett was awarded $551,000, which we were quite excited about it for 10 minutes. We realized in the next 10 minutes, when the second email came out, the majority of that money, up to 75% of it, is to subsidize your member town's minimum local contribution increases. So if you do the math, 75% of 550 is quite a lot. Our towns, I guess luckily, the two together total $189,000 increase. It's $139,403 for Templeton, that their minimum local contribution increased, and Phillipston's went up 50,311. So of that 551,000 that we were awarded in the grant, 189,000 of it is to cover the increase for the towns. If they choose, they can refuse it. I honestly don't know why they would. But it's ours to give to them. They have to let us know if they don't want to use it. The state was very clear in the guidance. This is a one-time help, I guess, for the towns. These minimum local contributions, I don't think these numbers are going down in the future. This is just kind of to help with the burden for this year. So it's good and it's bad. It gets us to a, I guess it gets us to a not-bad place. It's just, it's gonna really hurt everything for FY23.
Yeah, I think that's the scariest part to me is, okay, so that's great that, you know, we're going to offset a piece of the expense. But when FY23 rolls around, if there's another increase in minimum contribution, now, I'll say that the town of Templeton doesn't need just 139,000, but it's 139,000 plus whatever the new increase is going to be. And that could be significant in FY23. So that's very, very concerning, I think. And I know there's a lot of chatter out there. I know Mars is definitely taking a look at this and forming some advocacy around what it thinks a position should be. Because it's not necessarily a bad thing to want to help the municipalities, but maybe there was a better way to do it, I think, is what they're coming to, so.
You have an income sheet that you put up?
Yep, let me, so I have, I'm looking at all of them right now. So you want the ESER No Remaining, or that one, FY22?
Why don't we go with, um... Why don't you go with the one? If you, do you see the color coded, it's green?
I could only see there, because I downloaded them, I can only see the names. So if you tell me the actual file name.
How about the ESER funds with the E and D remaining balance?
Okay. ESER fund with, okay, gotcha. All right, so I was going to share the screen. Okay, well, that's interesting. It is not showing. Hold on, I don't know why.
Well, what we're trying to show you is we want to try to show you the minimal increase in Chapter 70 in the charter school, just the regular revenues that we normally see.
Yep. It's spinning, so that's what's happening right now, so it's spinning. So I don't know why it's doing that, but I'm, you must, you have the, I think that folks do have that, correct? The sheet in front of them? No? Yes?
Which color is the one that we're looking at?
It's.
We might just get right to the one that has the ESER funds on it.
Yeah, it's spinning.
We'll feed him.
Sorry.
Sorry, I apologize in advance for my dog, who seems to be growling and barking. And I do want to announce for the record that Kate Kalis has joined us, so she is on this call as well. Hi, Kate.
Does everybody have that one in front of them?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you talk to it, Emery, and then once it can come up, we'll...
Sure.
It's sorry, it's just spinning off of the email, but I'm going to get it going, so.
We'll just talk about it. So the hold harmless, the $30 per pupil in the Chapter 70, that is an increase for us of $37,020. So not much, but this is pretty much what we've been seeing the past few years. Chatter reimbursement is up, $7,700. We have transportation is down, which is no surprise to anyone because it's based off of the end-of-the-year report that we submitted for last year, which, of course, our costs were down because we were not transporting in the spring, but we were still paying for our buses, but we just didn't have to pay 100% for the buses. Another source of income that's down is E and D. Our E and D for FY20 was certified at $480,000. This particular income proposal proposes using 380,000 of it so that we would have a balance July 1 of $100,000. Medicaid, pretty much flat, $245,000. And then this one is, I show that the ESER funds are a source of income to help offset the minimum local contributions in the town's assessments, which are right below. And if you look at Templeton, their minimum local contribution went up $139,403. The biggest increase really for both towns, besides the minimum local contribution, is the cost of special ed transportation is going up like crazy. There's more kids needing transportation, but the rates, the cost of the transportation itself is what has really increased, and a lot has to do with all the extra cleaning measures that they have to take into consideration due to COVID. We're hoping next year that we're not quite in the same situation as we are. The numbers reflected on the transportation for special ed here is actually lower than what our current rates are because right now we are paying for extra monitors and extra cleaning practices that are happening on all of the vans. So the number that I used was a little bit less than that, hoping that we would not have all of those items for next year. So once you go down to Phillipston, their minimum local contribution increased by 50,311, and their transportation went up 25,000. So currently on this income scenario, the town of Templeton has an overall budget increase of 3.39%, and Phillipston has an increase of 0.53%, giving our whole general fund budget an increase of 1.15. So are you able to get up any of those other scenarios?
Well, what's happening is that I updated my computer, don't you know? And right now, it is not allowing me to share anything with Zoom. So I just had the recent update, so I think that is a problem. That's what's happening to me right now. It's not allowing me to do any sharing whatsoever right now. So I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, if you wanted to share it with me and they gave me privileges, I'd share it for you, or if you wanted to try to share it, Emery.
I've never shared anything.
As long as you have it, it's the first thing up on your screen, but they have to give you privileges.
I'm going to go ahead and share the email with you, Kate, how's that? And maybe you could help, because they will not let me, they will not let me share anything because I don't have permissions yet for some odd reason, I don't know why. Oh, Anne Marie's already the co-host.
So it looks like I can share, just tell me what you want me to share.
Okay, so why don't you share? Why don't you, well, either one, either choose the ESER funds with no remaining E and D? Yeah, why don't you just choose that one?
Okay.
When you open it, you might see purple.
Yeah, I gotta find them, though. Just give me a second. Okay. Let's see if this works. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, it is.
All right, Kate.
Making up for this morning.
Yes.
So.
I'm going to leave it like that, you tell me if you want me to scroll.
So this is the same thing that I just went over with all of the increases in Chapter 70, chatter, the decreases in transportation in E and D, except this one, I took and used all of our E and D. We have none in reserves on July 1 through in the whole 480,000, which gets us a little bit closer to what we were like last year. And that gives us a bottom line of 1.66% increase overall, and it still keeps Templeton at 3.39 for an overall assessment increase, and Phillipston at .5 for an overall assessment increase. I'm not sure that we can do any better on the income side than this particular scenario. We can work with any increase-decrease in the E and D. That's about the only number you have to play with on here, unless you're looking for additional monies from the towns, which I don't think is going to happen, and we're already subsidizing the majority of their increase anyways with that ESER fund. Let me just, if you want to scroll down a little bit, Kate, towards the school choice. As you can see, the school choice is down as well. Last year, we received 1.4 million. This year, we're only slated to receive 1.1. So that's a big increase to the fund that takes care of a lot of our health insurance in 10 of our salaries. So I'm not sure if anyone has any questions on any of this income.
I think it might be helpful to maybe talk through the line item piece of it, not necessarily line by line, of course, but because I think it's important to understand what makes up the number because that may influence the decision of how we use maybe some of that income, if that makes sense. Because I know we've had some preliminary discussions, but I think there's some points about the line items that we probably want to make sure everyone's clear on. And so maybe if we did that, would that sound like it might be a good plan?
The line item expense side of it?
Yeah, yeah, because obviously that's what drives, what we need the estimated receipts to say.
Yep. Kate, can you find the line item 1?
I think I can do it now, hold on, okay. How's that look?
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay. Yeah. And I do apologize, apparently the update did not, I don't know, who knows? I don't know what I'm talking about, so you can see it now, and that's the important piece. So where do you want me, where do you want to go? Do you want to go page by page, Margaret, or just?
Why don't we just start page by page? This first page, this is the administrative costs of our budget, which they're really, it's a 3.7% increase, but the biggest increase is coming from the computer software that we've had to add because we are remote. And a lot of that stuff that we've added is, it's not going to go away when we're not remote because we're not going to get rid of Zoom, we're not going to get rid of some of the electronic signature things. Kate could probably talk a little bit more as to the different softwares that we've had to add in the items that we would be keeping regardless of whether we're in remote, if anyone wanted more details on those exact things.
Yeah, just in looking at your explanation, I would also say that when we look at our strategic plan, things like Swiss and probably Teach Point and everything else too, in one way or another, really are there and support the items that we have in our strategic plan as well. So it may have been born out of necessity at first to get things implemented quicker perhaps, but I think Swiss was already in the works prior to that and a couple other things. So I think it makes sense that we have to spend the money on the technology. When we want data, we have to be able to capture it, so. Anyone?
Yeah.
Yeah, does anyone have any specific questions on the first page? I apologize. Little dog who thinks he's a big dog, sorry. Does anyone have any questions on the first page for expenses? As far as, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but if there's something specific, because I don't want us to beat a dead horse, because there's quite a few pages to go through. Hearing none, I'll say let's move on to page 2, we can always come back if someone's got a question.
So on page 2, the two things I'd like to point out is this expense, line-by-line expense budget moves the Assistant Principal at TES from school choice over to the general fund, which has been a goal of the school committee, is to move those salaries from school choice over. So if we can start doing one at a time or a couple at a time, this is working in the right direction. And the second yellow line that I have highlighted, I tried to take all of the teachers that we had in school choice and move them all over to the general fund, but it just doesn't work, you can't move them all. It's going to have to be one position at a time and maybe a little health insurance each year. So you can see that the 275,000 I subtracted and moved them back into school choice. We have four teachers in school choice that have been there forever. Those are our Elementary Unified Arts. The past few years, we have thrown the extra teachers into school choice, but we're trying to get them out. And another important thing to know about this budget is that there are no new positions in this budget. Everything in here that we're proposing is exactly what we have right now. So I don't know if you want to go on to page 3?
Yeah, let's keep scrolling, and if anyone on the school committee or anyone has questions, just blurt them out, because with the share screen, I can't see. And I don't want to hold up a question, so feel free to just unmute and ask away.
If you want to just keep scrolling till you get to the instructional, like the subtotal page?
Okay.
Which is page 6. There you go. So I went through all of the supply lines and really looked at them closely to see which ones were going in the red, which ones weren't, and really made a lot of adjustments to them. Not that those dollar amounts add up too much, because a lot of the supply accounts are like $500, $600, and you adjust it 50 bucks, it doesn't really make a lot of difference in your bottom line. But I went through and really took a good look at those so that we could have money in the places that we need it. And you can see from the bottom, the subtotal, that the whole instructional piece of our budget only went up 2.5%. And at least 1% of that is a cost of living raise for the staff. And once you factor in their steps, it equals more than 1%. So that 2.5% in instructional is really minimal.
I don't want to move into, and someone has a, I just want to make sure no one has a question, ma'am chair? Is that good?
I'm not hearing any, so let's move on. Again, if we need to come back, we will.
Yeah, this is our transportation screen here, so you want to pause here?
Yeah.
Like, right in the middle of the page is our special ed transportation. It has gone up 32%. And like I explained before, we have more kids needing transportation, but it's just the overall rates of everything are going really high. Our regular transportation, I was able to keep it at the same. There was no increase. When we were supposed to open without COVID, we were going to need a new bus for this past year, but obviously we didn't, so I'm anticipating that it's going to take us probably all of next year to get our ridership back up to where it was to need that extra. So that amount that's on that line covers the increases for FY23.
You know, I want to just say too, is that, you know, obviously, you know, how much your base amount is or cost matters. So if this was only, now I don't want to be facetious, but if there was, let's say it was $10,000, okay? And it went up, you know, 33%, well, you know, the impact of that is, you know, certainly something we have to pay attention to, but I'm not devastated. When you, when you're talking about 32% increase, right, or a total increase, pardon me, I think it's overall, yeah, of, you know, 100, I'm trying to find where FY21 is, 562. I'm just saying that this is the situation that every district is finding themselves in right now in terms of their largest increase of costs. I've been in contact with three very local districts who've said, and asked me point blank, have you seen, you know, a tremendous increase in not only sped transportation but tuitions? And, you know, we're all, we're all feeling that, right? Because it's a bit unregulated. And although, you know, we can go out to bid, because it's, you know, sped transportation is something that, you know, we can, you know, we can go out to bid and often do, there's just only so many companies that provide this transportation.
I have just a quick question on sped transportation. Does that include in district and out of district? It's the two pieces together?
It does, it's both in and out.
Okay, thank you. I figured it was, but I just wanted to make sure I understood.
While we're right here, let's just take a, have a quick little chat about athletics. This past year, actually FY20, we had to move our stipend for the athletic director into the athletic revolving because we didn't, it was one of the things we cut from our regular budget. It is still cut, it's proposed to be cut from this FY22 budget, but we are going to have to look at athletic revolving very closely because this year we have athletics running and we have no... um, because this year we have athletics running and we have no income coming into it at all. So it is being drawn down a lot. We're, we're not going to be left with enough to cover all of the things that we usually pay from it. Um, so, but that, that's kind of a conversation by itself for another time.
I think what would be helpful at some point, Anne Marie, as you said, for a different time is to really get um, a breakdown of what we pay for athletics and what funds it comes, comes out of so that we can really digest, you know, what should be funded where? And if we need to end up subsidizing um, the athletic program in the general fund, because we've, we're taking more out of the revolving and, you know, what, what do we need to look at for ticket prices? All those other things.
Right.
I think that would be helpful to have that. Um, and maybe we can add that to an agenda for a meeting in, in the next month or two, and we'll see, um, you know, what we decide at that point.
Sure.
Margaret, this is Rayanne.
Yes.
I was wondering on this sped transportation, if there's any chance that there'd be a greater reimbursement from the state? Is there anything pending on that? Because if everybody's realizing this increase, this would be a place where they could come in and help.
There's talk that they want to put reimbursement towards it. There's talk that you can put it in circuit breaker, but so far it's just talk. We haven't seen anything yet.
Every year, every year, we, we, they have something to be said about this, but they never really do act.
So I, I think what I heard last um, was Jay Sullivan was hoping this year, um, because he could not do it for the, uh, well, maybe next year, I'm sorry. He's hoping that for next year, but he couldn't do it from this year, because the Student Opportunity Act did not get funded. Um, to maybe start looking at including that, the transportation pieces. Because if you remember, one of the goals was to reimburse not just the tuitions, but the transportation, if monies were available. The priority of the funds was the tuition, and then it would go to transportation after that. Um, he was, you know, hoping that might be the case last I heard. Um, but again, until the numbers get hashed out to figure out how much money is in that pool. Um, I, I'm, I'm cautiously pessimistic. I mean, borderline on the optimism, I don't know how to say it. Um, because the governor did try to put money into the SOA funding. I just don't know what that's going to look like, because it looked like um, they really funded the economically disadvantaged category. Um, and I'm not sure, and money went into circuit breaker. But I think the, the bigger discussion will be, you know, what type of supports do we need to put in place for our students that may categorize them into the, the, the special ed categories? Is that a possibility that may increase some of our services and whatnot for these kids? That would increase the amount of special ed services that we would look to reimburse? And is that something that would happen statewide? Um, I'm just kind of talking off the top of my head, so I really haven't thought that through, but could that be a possibility?
Anything's possibility.
Yeah, I, I, I think that they've, you know, special education was one of the main, major areas that they knew that when they looked at the funding formula, you know, old and I'll call it new, but they knew that it was woefully um, under uh, you know, uh, funded. They, you know, because it hadn't gone up in so many years. So um, the transportation is the piece that I think that, there's really, it, it, a lot of it is all about what they're willing to allow us, the districts, to apply where. Whether it be circuit breaker, whether it be um, towards Medicaid, whether it be um, a couple of things, right? So remember, we're supposed to get a hundred percent reimbursement for transportation, regular transportation. Everyone knows that, like, they've done it one year out of, I don't know how many, and then never again. So, you know, every year we, we, we hear, um, we ask if there are things that can be applied one way or another into any of the buckets that we potentially have. Um, they tell us that they consider it, and I'm sure, and I'm sure that they do, but they do it in a sense that they're only going to really uh, let it happen if there are monies, quote unquote, left over. I, I don't know of many years, even when things are going great, there's a lot of leftover money, right? So that's how generally the circuit breaker gets funded, et cetera. So we do, we do a lot of advocacy. I know that Anne Marie can maybe speak to that through, um, you know, through her organization. I know that ACE does a lot. That's the um, Organization for Special Education Directors. Um, but again, it all boils down to, um, you know, you know, if they have the monies to um, dole it all out to everybody who wants or needs it. So that's, that's where, that's where it falls through.
Margaret, this is Rayanne again. This is really, it's concerning. I understand it is the amount that we're given, but it concerns me because of the lack of uh, school choice money that we'll have access to. Um, for FY22, it really puts us in quite a bind.
Well, I think that's the other part of the conversation, is that I think that, not I think, we know that um, the numbers that are elementary level, uh, call it pre-K through, of course, four are very, very high. Matter of fact, you can, you can go pre-K through, uh, through seven right now. Um, and you would, you've got some pretty high numbers. Now, at the middle school, it, it does tend to taper off a bit. Um, you know, where we see our opportunity, if, if uh, we're going to consider school choice next year, truthfully, is at the high school level. Um, it, it prob, not probably, I can't, I don't see, I don't really see a situation where we really be able to do it at the elementary unless we added teachers, and we've, we certainly have gone down that route um, before. Um, so that's gonna, you know, I think that'll be a major discussion item. It's the, it's, in terms of generating revenue, it really, for right now, it seems to be the um, you know, really the only place to do it right this, right this minute. We know that we have folks who are very interested in coming here, school choice, we know that. Um, that's not the issue. It's just that we've, we've, we closed it off due to pandemic, and of course, at the lower levels, we just didn't have the space. Um, you know, it, it is, it is an option.
Well, it's, Margaret, it's an option that I fought against, because we're balancing our budget on money that is not ours, that we can count. And we look at the proposal that we have on our income sheet for FY2022. That school choice money is making a big difference, because it's like minus 20%. So, you know, I, I realized there aren't places to bring money in here, but with the transportation up where it is, where we made the decision to start to live with real money, um, we're really at quite a, quite a, quite a point right now. So this, this really is going to take some, some thought as to which, which way we go, and we really don't have many options.
And I agree with you, and I think the other, we're not going to see how this is going to play out truthfully until next year, and hopefully things are, you know, pandemic wise have, um, have improved. Uh, you know, we all hope that for a lot of reasons. But um, again, our numbers, when you look at the kids whom were supposed to be here, but they homeschooled, they are some very high numbers at the elementary level. Um, and remember, we cut all those, we cut those teachers, right? Uh, at the elementary mostly, um, to balance the budget last year. Um, I, I think that's going to be, you know, something that the community is going to have to. Once again, I, I don't decide, right? They've, they've, they've made the decision once, they may make it again um, the same way. But we're going to be in a situation where there's, if all the numbers bear, bear out the same that they did prior to the COVID, um, they're going to be in the twenty, we already knew this, 28, 29, 27, you know, in that area. Um, it doesn't look it right now, because we, again, we have a lot of kids who are either homeschooled or full remote.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yep, and I think just, just um, speaking to Rayanne's point with school choice, you know, I'm looking at, I pulled out the forecast that Anne Marie had created for us back in the beginning of January, and without replacing any school choice students, and trying to move then personnel over to the general fund so that we can fund them. I mean, we really are looking at, we've got maybe two more years before, you know, I mean, I think right now, we're, we're starting to hit yellow, and next, the year after it's red, and after that, we're, we're underwater. So we've really got to come up with a strategy as to how we're going to fund these things. How do we use school choice, if we use school choice, and how do we use it effectively? Um, so yeah, I think you're absolutely right, Rayanne. And if we're continually facing these large increases, you know, 32%, we can't, you know, we can't manage that year after year on top of these things. It's very disconcerting looking at these numbers, knowing that we don't make, we don't make money. We rely on the state and our municipalities basically to fund us. Um, and certainly our municipalities cannot afford these types of increases without some relief somewhere.
Yep. Yep, and interestingly, we've had the least amount of kids or students who school choiced out. So if you think about that, we had less coming in, obviously, but we also had the fewest amount of school choice out, which is good, because you want your differential to be, is healthy. But um, we certainly lost, you know, a lot of, we did not replace any kids, but six. So I mean, those are things that we're going to have to, I think, seriously consider if we're looking to offset costs and, you know, you know, and if we're looking for a revenue stream, so to speak. Absolutely.
Kate, I do, can I just throw in real quick too? So if we do um, look at that revenue stream for the, for the upgrades, um, wouldn't that also mean that we'd have to add some additional buses? Um, and I know that uh, Anne Marie did said earlier that, you know, uh, we were able to hold our existing um, transportation, uh, general transportation numbers, because we didn't add that additional route. How certain are we that that's not going to um, add this year as well? Do we think that that's going to hold throughout the year, or is that just a projection?
Well, well, school choice students don't get transported, so, so that doesn't cause us an issue there. Um, and honestly, with the number of parents that are transporting their children to and from, I think it's going to take us a little bit for parents to trust the kids to be in that close a proximity on a bus to put them all back. I, I, I just don't see it happening all in September.
Awesome, thank you.
You know, and interesting, that's an interesting point, and I think that some folks are talking about as well. So in other words, you know, it, um, obviously the mandate is that we have to, we have to, we have to bus. Okay, so, you know, uh, we know that, that's what the statute says. But I think that some districts, um, I know this to be true, is that given what Anne Marie just said, yeah, maybe they're a little hesitant at the beginning of the year. And then, you know, by November, we're just, we're just doing great, I'm talking about next year, and everybody wants to come back to school. Well, some districts, um, aren't, many districts are not going to be prepared for that. Um, and they're talking about, uh, you know, charging students to take buses after a certain point. So in other words, I don't know, pick a date, October 15th. You know, if you, you know, because you're going to have to offset costs somehow, because you're going to go in, say, knowing that you need eight buses. But then things get great in November, now they, everyone comes back, and then all of a sudden, you now need 11 buses. Now granted, you know, that's, that's a lot of money. I, I, I get it. But if you need more buses, there's no, unless you're going to put money, you know, you got money, you know, available to you, you're, you're going to have to try to, you're going to have to offset that somehow. Um, and so folks have actually thought about that, is that if, you know, what do you do in November when that happens? December, pick them up? Yeah. Another great decision, right? I'm just saying, I mean, these are, these are things that are going to, they're going to come up. You know, you're talking, what is it per, uh, per day, Anne Marie, for a typical bus, like, um,
Oh.
Four hundred, no.
Yeah, it's close to 400.
400 a day, times 180, alright, so I mean, or whatever the case is. So the, the, so think about that, you know, you're, you know, you, you almost have to budget for 11, know that you need eight, at least initially, and then, you know, bank on the fact that you're going to need 11 by, say, in my fictitious story here, by, you know, by November. Um, you know, parking money like that gets a little bit, you know, concerning. But I mean, I, I think that it's, it's a cost that most districts, our district, won't be able to absorb just on a, you know, just on a regular basis.
I did just want to interject for a moment and just say that Mrs. Mattson has also joined us. Um, and I apologize for saying that a little late, but I did not see her since we're sharing screens, but I wanted to make that announcement.
Margaret, does the, can I ask a question? Does the regionals, does a regional school district have the option of not providing busing? Or charging for busing?
It must provide busing.
It must.
To be reimbursed.
Right, but I, within, what is it, a mile and a half?
Yeah.
Anything over a mile and a half.
Yeah, so, you know, now do we bus students closer? I think the answer is yes. Um, you know, but that, that's really a big philosophical discussion we'd have to get into. Um, we have unsafe, you know, there's not sidewalks everywhere, and um, you know, so I, I think we do the, we've always done the right thing um, to the best of our ability. So it puts you down a slippery slope when you start saying, well, you know, they're 1.4 miles, uh, and there's no sidewalks, but sorry, we're not going to bus you. Um, but no, you're, you're absolutely right, Rayanne. There's statute that we have got to provide that transportation.
Yeah, yeah, and that discussion on that mile, mile and a half, it, that's, that's a rabbit hole we don't want to go down. I've been down it a number of times in discussions, and it's a no win, because anything happens to one of our students and nobody wanted to engage in it. And that's just what holds out there. The kid could get hurt, and we can't have that. So that may not be any bargaining power for us. And then we have E and D. I mean, I'm looking at all these numbers, and I do this early in the game, I understand that. But, but we look at E and D, that's, we don't have the N D we've had in years. So we can understand what's there, but there is somewhat of a panic on my part, knowing that a lot of these STEM things are not there to use. So, just wanted to say that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Rayanne. It's, these numbers are not painting um, a really positive outlook going forward. Um, and it's very concerning. Um, we, we have one, you know, one expense that comes up out of line, and, you know, especially, you know, I know that we were looking at, oh, if we use all of our E and D, um, that leaves us with no cushion. And the only recourse after no cushion is going back to the towns and asking for additional monies, or ending up in the red, and the commissioner frowns very deeply at districts who do that. Um, you basically go into um, the sort of oversight with the state, and certainly don't want that. So, yeah, I, I think your concerns are very valid.
But, and then it doesn't hold, I mean, we've, we've identified this in this budget process as we are right now before. And if our answer is going back to the towns, the towns have to fully understand our, our dilemma, and we never seem to get to that point.
You know what I think is different this time, I think? Um, and you're right, Rayanne, I've been here five years, and um, it's always a difficult conversation, uh, to say the least. But, you know, without, again, it's not just this, but it's, it's a huge part of our increase is special education. Um, and the fact is that we don't, we don't, we do not have um, uh, a say. You know, this is really a cost that is, is really borne on every district without a lot of, um, a lot of options, quite frankly. Um, everyone knows that, um, you know, we, you know, sometimes when kids move in, we've got a couple of examples of that. You know, one of those examples, you know, without exaggeration, is costing the district a quarter of a million dollars. It, that is how much one program costs. Okay, and so when that happens, we, you know, there is no, you know, there's no like, well, you can't have to pay it, or you, maybe I won't pay it. Of course, you're going to pay it to the, it's the benefit of the child. But um, if you were that kind of a person, you, you would still have to pay that. It's, it's the law. So this isn't like frivolous spending, you know, we've, you know, this is, we really inherit a lot of times, um, you know, special education and transportation. That's why we try to build programs in the district, right, to keep kids here, you know, here. Um, and by the way, not that, I don't know what, you know, what your experience is with this, that we often just receive notification that these special education programs are going to increase their tuition, and that's how it is. There is no, there's no bargaining, there's no, gee, I don't want to do that. They just simply notify you. And that's how it is. There is no, there's no bargaining. There's no, gee, I don't want to do that. They just simply notify you and the state that they're going to increase its, um, you know, its tuition. And I'm going to tell you that every year we get those letters that say, we are going to increase our tuition by X. And so I'm, again, I think the difference is this time, it's not that, last year was another great example. We didn't ask for anything. We didn't. Um, the fact is though, special education is born on the communities. These are, by the way, these are not spec, you know, um, school choice children, right? That was the very first question I used to get all the time. Well, how many of these kids are school choice? None. The kids that were, the kids that are being sent out to these type of programs are residents from both Templeton and Phillipston period. Um, and you know, we've had to show that information several times and over the years. I think that may be one of the bigger differences this year. Right? And Maria, I don't want to overspeak, but that increase, a good portion of it, what we, I think we actually broke it down to a percentage. You know, of the increase overall, it, it, it's, it's quite high and we have very little to, we have very little um, to affect that.
Well, that, that's a good segue into some other high increases in our budget that we have no control over too. So if you want to scroll down to page ten.
And while you're doing that, I'm going to just read a couple of comments from the YouTube feed because I think they um, work nicely into the conversation we're having. Um, these are all from Mike Curry, who is a Templeton resident, as well as uh, the chair of the Templeton Select Board. Um, and I'm going to read several comments he's made that we stressed to Anne and Susanna, that's Senator Goby and Representative Whips, that we were worried about stated impacts when we hosted them a few weeks ago. I specifically mentioned our priority to fund our school district. And then he commented about our discussion with school choice, that it's certainly an opportunity as you have done a great job integrating tech and teacher knowledge. Um, he says, right, Chris, good point about the school choice outs. We didn't realize that as you did a good job of educating your currents with your current methodology and curriculum. Kind of paraphrasing that, you know, the students would stay in. Um, and he, then he just recently said sped, received, Chris, I hear you. So um, I think to your point, Rayanne, you know, we've got to get the message out to the towns. I find it encouraging that um, Chair Curry is listening to us and responding, letting us know he's hearing what we're saying. So we appreciate that feedback. Um, but I think the larger question is how do we push that message even further out? Um, and make sure that everybody is speaking about um, the issues that we have as a district and what, what we're facing. So I just wanted to share those and we can go ahead to the next piece. Thank you.
Well, on this page, we'll just touch real quickly, but um, the maintenance area, that only has a increase of point three seven. So I, I think we've done really good in that area. That includes everybody's one percent raise. So we've, we've tried, we've really worked hard to try and make changes within our building and around our complex that are money saving items. And I think it's starting to show by that low increase. So back to high increases, that yellow line right across, that is our Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment. And I had mentioned this at a school committee meeting, that that went up twenty-eight percent. We've had the past couple of years, we've probably had at least a handful of those members retire from our district. And I didn't highlight it, but it's on here. I just got the actual number for our um, group insurance assessment, which is our teacher retirement. And that one went up quite a bit too. That's um, that went up seven percent. But it went up forty-five thousand dollars. You know, that, that's like two teachers retired and, and there's a few, like the past couple of years, we've seen one or two go a year. So that's not going down those numbers. You can see on the regular health insurance, and I think I had mentioned this before, we're expecting very small increase from the providers. So I didn't adjust that at all. And currently that number that is budgeted represents nine payments in the general fund in three coming from school choice based on the population of active employees that we have now that are taking that insurance. I don't know if anyone has any questions on insurance, but I also want to just point out like a little bit further down on the screen. We have a few leases that are being paid off this year, which helps us for next year. So some of those fall off and they're not things that need to be replaced, like some of the um, equipment for facilities, that's not something you would replace every three to five years. Those you get a lot more years out of. So that gave us a little bit of leeway. They weren't big dollar amounts, but anything helps.
So Anne Marie, I just wanted to, just from a point of magnitude, when we look at our year to year, I'm, I'm going to go back to the green income sheet. General fund income, FY twenty-one nineteen seven two nine, we're looking for nineteen nine five, nineteen nine five seven, which is an increase of about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. If I look at this one sheet, a hundred and fifty-four thousand of that two twenty-seven is strictly from things that we really have no control over, insurance, retirement, et cetera. That, that is, is uh, is, I guess unbelievable is the only word, word I can think of that it is driving, you know, if we didn't have those severe increases, um, it might paint a little bit of a different picture for us.
Yep.
And I, I want to echo what um, I hope didn't get glossed over because I think Emery said something very, very important. Over the last couple of years, especially given, you know, what we've been through, we've, we've worked really hard to look at our budget and, and to, and to certainly spend smarter. Right? So maintenance is a great example of that, just the general maintenance of things. Um, you know, we, you know, when you look at these numbers, these increases, you can, obviously you can tell, right? You, you know, when you talk about a facility as large as ours and you only go up, I lost it now, but I don't want to go spin around here, but you know, we've, we've kept it down uh, quite a bit. And so you're going to be able to see the culprits a lot easier. Um, that are going to, you know, increase our budget as high as it is. And there it is. I mean, these are huge numbers. And to your point, uh, Margaret was a hundred and forty, you just, I think, I think you said in just those two areas, something to that effect. Yeah, we have no control over people retiring and we have no control over, you know, health insurance and we have no control over, you know, special education, truthfully. We, we truly do not. And so um, you know, it, it gets harder and harder to manage, especially when these numbers go up, you know, a twenty-eight percent increase in retirement. That's, that's, that's a ton of money.
Well, if you want to scroll down, I think it's to the, the last page, it's just our recap and our, our totals. Like on here, um, this is pretty much our special ed tuitions. And you can see the increases. There was no increase um, in the kids that are tuitioned out to collaboratives. But the non-publics, you can see that it was an increase thirty percent, a hundred and twelve thousand. Well, I can tell you right now that the number of kids going to those has dropped. We lost five students from last year to this year, but we're still getting an increase of a hundred thousand because of the tuition that we have. That's a quarter of a million dollars. So the prices of everything is going up, even though we lost four students. It doesn't reflect in these numbers because everything is just so high in price.
And to um, put it maybe in another way too, you know, um, I'm thinking about some of those students. So maybe some of those students went to a quote unquote um, less expensive. You know, uh, non-public school, um, you know, special education placement. The placements, again, we worked really hard to keep our children in the district. Why? Because they're our kids. They're Templeton and they're Phillipston students. We want them here. Um, and that's why we've worked very hard with our social emotional learning and, and doing the things that we do there, but so the type of, you know, the kids really do need, um, you know, this type of uh, assistance. They are generally, you know, kiddos whom um, have a really high, high need. And so there, those places are specialized. So when I say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or quarter of a million dollars, I, you see us not bat an eye because that is about the general going rate of, of these, of these um, residential, you know, type facilities and and there's almost, and we've talked to Andrew, we've talked to everybody about it. Those things, those places, even if they just held the price, they froze them, we'd still be paying a quarter of a million dollars. So we're, you know what I mean? So even if there's no increase, those, those things are um, are really, really devastating to our, to everyone's budget, but certainly a budget this, this tight.
Yeah. And I think this might be a good segue, just to take a moment to talk about the special ed revolving, I'm sorry, stabilization fund um, that you, that Emery had brought to our attention, um, our last meeting, the meeting before. Um, and what that would mean, I know we're still looking into it, but I think that um, you know, looking to formulate a stabilization fund to help offset really is something that we need to seriously, you know, consider. So um, you know, I, I think we need to move forward with, with pulling the information together and sending something out to the towns and doing um, maybe getting on the agenda for each of the towns to talk about it and, and try and then maybe get it, because I think it'll have to go to town meeting. See if we'd be, have the ability to get it on for the next town meetings, uh, warrants. And at least get this, the fund created. And then we can talk about um, how maybe we can get it funded through, you know, use of whatever types of funds there may or may not be. So I think that we, we definitely need to move forward with that.
No, I think that, that's a great idea. And I, I honestly, of course I do, but I, I think that it benefits not only the district, but the towns. Because these costs, if they move in after, I believe it's October first, um, Anne Marie, I forget when we are, you know, financially um, beholden, I, I, there's a date and for some odd reason, it's escaping me. Uh, you know, they are yours. If they move in a little bit before that, or you know, then you can cost share with another, with the other district, with the district moving in. But it's not, it's not October. I forget what date now, but it, either way, my point is that these type of costs are usually just deadly to a budget, but they can come upon you without notice. And whatever, whatever way we can defray that, you know, even if it's a little bit, it still will be better, you know, in the long run rather than just um, soaking the entire um, uh, you know, the entire cost.
So I just, I want to sort of finish up this line item and just point out that the overall increase of this expense budget is two point eight nine percent. Now Margaret had mentioned before on the green income scenario, which is the one that left a hundred thousand in E and D, that income increase is only one point one five percent. So that leaves us with a shortfall. And I do have an operating budget sheet, Kate, if you want to find it. If you pull that up, it kind of outlines things and makes the shortfall a little bit clearer.
I think I'm sharing now, if I'm not mistaken. Let's see if I can get that. So I'm going to have to stop share here for just a sec, guys, so. And then figure out if I can find it. So um, and what's it called, Emery? Again, I'm sorry.
Um, I think it's just called operating budget.
I've read my, okay.
Like twenty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to take me a minute here, sorry.
You sent these to us, Emery. Yep.
It's opening, hold on.
While it opens, I'm just going to read one more comment from Mr. Curry, that he's a career logistician. And he understands maintenance and capital requirements and he definitely understands your, our needs on this budget season, um, watching our needs. So um, again, thank you to Mr. Curry for letting us know you're out there and, and hearing our plight and understanding some of our challenges.
Thank you.
That, that's important.
Emery, is this the budget? Just so I want to make sure I have the right, okay?
Yes. So basically this sheet, it just puts together all of our funding, everything that we spend regardless of what source it comes from. The grants, the revolving accounts. But at the end, it takes into consideration how much, how much income we have from all of our funding sources to fund all of these expenses. And if you scroll down, you can see that we have a shortfall of two hundred and forty-two thousand. Now that two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar shortfall is based on using all of the E and D. So if you remain, if you keep a hundred thousand dollars remaining for an emergency, that shortfall is three hundred and forty-two thousand of expenses over your sources of income. I'm not sure if anyone has questions or I don't know, it's, it's the same story each year. What, how much of a shortfall and how are we going to take care of it?
Yeah, we're getting to the point where we'll, we'll just pull it out of school choice. It's just not an option.
No.
And unless, you know, I, I'm going to go back to an old conversation, which I, I don't, by the way, I agree with in principle, I really do. So when folks are like, why would you hire all these teachers? At the elementary level, Chris, you know, um, just to take in more specially, yeah, pardon me, uh, more school choice kids. And I'm like, well, it, it's, it's just about, for, for me, it was revenue, right? And, but I, I do understand, well, then what happens if those kids go, you know, they, they're no longer here, then, then you still got the teacher, that kind of conversation. Then, you know, deficit spending was brought up a couple of times. I agree with all of that. I would say this is that the trend, it narrates it, you know, you know, for the, well, for the five years I've been here. That, and I'm sure beforehand, but they, there is a, quite a need or a want to school choice into this district as an elementary student. Okay? And you know, I, I don't, I think that's a, that's a really important conversation to have with both towns, both Templeton and Phillipston. You know, because it was such a point, right? It was such a um, oh, I shared, do you mind if I, I'm sorry, you guys need to see that anymore? It's kind of depressing.
We're all sad.
Yeah. I, I would simply say that, look, there's, there is a revenue stream. I'm not saying two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars worth, and don't hear me say that. Um, but it, there are, um, it, I mean, it's, it's there. You know, is that something, because but once you have a special, uh, boy, I'm talking about special needs kids a lot lately, um, earlier, but our, our school choice kids, you know, you, you have them for, forever. And that's not a bad thing, but going to the other side, to the other point is if that you start, if they do start to fall off, are these teach, are these kids really, you know, um, are these school choice kids really paying for teachers? If you remember this about three or four years ago, right? I don't necessarily disagree. What I did disagree with and still do today is that that's fine, but you can't expect the district to take its insurance portion out of school choice. Right? That absolutely should be on the local side, one hundred percent. And, and that was always the kind of the, the conversation we'd get to is that like, if you're willing to do that, you know, if that's the, the bargain, then fine. And you know, it certainly makes it a lot easier, um, more palatable. It, it, it can't be done. It's a lot of money. I understand that on both, from both towns perspective. So you almost get trapped into this, um, boy, you know, I, I want to call it an ideal, but you do, you do get trapped into this, you know, to this need that you need to feed, if nothing else, that insurance. Look, it went up seven percent, right, Emery? I think you said roughly, uh, give or take. I think, was that, no, health insurance was, I forget, that was retirement, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sure, yeah. You, you need to feed that unless it goes to the, into the general side. So I, you know, it, it is, it's a philosophical, you know, conversation to have, you know, and I think that that we still have to keep talking about it, not only here, but beyond.
No, I, I think you have made a very good point that um, probably at our next uh, meeting, maybe our next finance meeting, we really need to have that deeper dive discussion onto what our school choice position will be. Um, because I think you outlined all the challenges we have. position will be. Um, because I think you outlined all the challenges we have. Oh, it sounds idealistic. If you could take in, you know, 10, 12 school choice kids, it would pay for a teacher. Well, that's assuming all those kids are in the same grade.
That's exactly right. It is exactly right. So.
Yeah, we have, if we have 10 or 12 school choice kids leave, if it's one from each grade, we're not getting, you know, we're not able to take any teacher, teaching positions away. So it really makes this a very difficult discussion. And, and in my mind, that's also one of the downfalls of the whole chapter 70 formula. Is there's limited step functionality. Um, you know, how many kids in a class gets you a teacher? Well, if you get one more, you're adding a full teacher, not just a portion of one.
Right? So you, you, you sit there and you go, okay, what do we do? So I think that, you know, a- again, we could break that all out again. I mean, it is a revenue stream, right? I think, but, you know, going forward, we made the active decision this year not to take any school choice students in for all the right reasons, by the way, for every one of those reasons are great. And, you know, um, our differential is, is okay. It's okay. Um, it would have been fantastic if we would have only lost the amount of kids we lost this year and took in as many kids as we normally do. We didn't. That's okay. I mean, I, uh, it was, we did it with purpose. So, uh, you know, I don't want to, and not everything is going, the point is you can go upside down quick, right? So I, I get all of that. I just don't know what options we have as a district. I, I'm gonna include the towns finances to really expect, you know, uh, we, our budget was only 1% over, right, last year, 1.19, I believe. If I remember correctly, we, you know, we've, we did a lot last year. You know, we know, everyone knew we weren't gonna get a 1.19. Again, that was just never, it's just not gonna happen. But we've, we've done a really nice job, I think. It really cutting back on things and going through things very, 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 um, carefully, making sure that we're not spending money where we don't need to.
Are any other questions, um, for the, from the committee at this point on these numbers? Because I think we really need to talk about, you know, what needs to happen next, because we're getting close to the point where, uh, one, we really need to give a preview to the towns of, you know, what we're looking at so they can get in their minds and on their papers. Um, as they start to draft their budgets, you know, where we may be coming in. I know there's a lot of unknowns with the S or two funding and what the governor said, is that gonna hold true to the end? But we have to just assume what, what's in place today, um, is what it is. And we have on the books our first public hearing, a preliminary hearing uh, for Thursday, the 26th. And I'm looking at Susan's box just to see if she'll shake her head if I've got that correct. Um, yeah, she's shaking it. So yeah, so Thursday, the 26th would be a preliminary. No, sorry. The 25th is a Thursday. Sorry, Thursday, the 25th. It is a Thursday, um, that we have a preliminary hearing set for six o'clock. Um, and it will be mostly the unveiling of our budget to really talk through for the public to hear. Um, and we'll make sure that we push out that invitation to, uh, the towns as well, the select boards, the finance committees, et cetera. So that we can make sure everybody engages. Doing this virtually is, is, is gonna be challenging. Which is why we really want to get the preliminary hearing out there so people can hear things to formulate questions. The final budget hearing would be then March 3rd, which is about a week later. That would be a Wednesday. Tentatively scheduled for six, we may do a meeting prior. Um, so the time is up in the air for the committee as a whole. Uh, but that would be our final meeting where we would take, uh, again, public comment on the bu, on the budget. And then we would want to vote on that so that we have something certified to present to the towns for them to include in their budget books. So that's the timing that we're looking at. Um, prior to those two events, we do have our next school committee meeting on February 17th. So I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm looking at Anne Marie and, and Dr. Kazmit, you know, what, how would you like the committee to proceed for, from tonight and the night of the 17th? You know, what do you need from us? So that you can move forward, because I know we need to put together our budget, um, presentations and the budget information that we send out. So what direction are you looking from us this evening?
I think this evening, I would look to Anne Marie to make sure that we, do we, we have all the hard numbers now, correct? I mean, we're not waiting on.
We have all of the hard numbers. It's just figuring out the shortfall.
You know, I think that, I, I, you know, I think that we have the budget we have, we're still, again, we have all these, we don't know what's gonna happen to S, but I think that smart move is literally to, to do exactly as we, as we've been told, right? We just assume that, because that's really the worst case scenario. And, and, because I don't want to assume anything else. I don't want to assume anything better. Quite frankly, I don't want to add money to that, you know, that, oh, we're gonna get this much, because this is, I think it's best to assume that and, and move forward with this, this number, quote unquote, as the, the number. And I'm, I'm looking to Anne Marie to make sure that I, you know, I'm not misspeaking. I think that we don't have too much in the way of, um, tweaking.
No, no, it really, the big thing is, is the E and D conversation.
Right.
You know,
I think it's the conversations, right?
That the committee needs to have and give me a solid number to work with. You know, right now you have a scenario that is all in or save 100,000. You can go with any scenario in between. It's, it's not gaining you much, but.
Well, yeah.
It's really philosophical, yeah. Yeah.
$349 is not much to work with if you have an emergency either. And that's what we have left in seven, 121. So it really is a conversation on E and D.
So I think we need to have that, um, at least philosophically, just to start with it, with, put a stake in the ground with E and D on where we want, um, Anne Marie and Chris to go with this so they can formulate the presentation. Obviously, as we know, once we put the stake in the ground based on feedback and whatever else, we'll, we'll move the stake if need be. But coming out of this meeting tonight, um, I would love it if someone maybe made a motion to include, you know, or up to in whatever amount of E and D, and then we can discuss it and decide if that's where we go.
How about, how about not, how about at the next meeting, people could think about what they, what their ideas are?
Does that give you guys enough time?
Well, the only thing we have to do is we have to just put these numbers into a PowerPoint presentation. So right now you have, you have two numbers of E and D on the choice. You, you have either a shortfall of $340,000 or you have a shortfall of 240,000 in, in how we want to close that gap. You know, the most income that you're getting is an increase of 327,000. We have a little bit more than that on our, um, expense side. So, so, you know, we have, we'll work on closing that gap and we'll present some options to you, I guess, on the 17th in the PowerPoint. And then you'll have to take a firm stand then on what you want to do.
Can I ask you just a general question for the folks who've been here, you know, a bit? And I'm being serious now. In, in the years past, did you, did you not, um, really apply all of your E and D? I mean, if, if not every dime of it, I mean, that's a, a being.
Up until the last, up until the last few years, as long as I've been here, it's been all in. Even the 324,000, the $324, it's been all in. I can't remember, and Hank, maybe you can remember, a case that we, I, I don't ever remember a time where we had to go back to the towns for an emergency. I think we've always handled it.
No, I haven't.
Like, 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 you know, you put a freeze on, no more spending. You, you don't do this, you don't do that. At, at this point, you kind of just have to, whatever sources of funds you have, you need to use.
Right. I've never been trained that way. Um, as my former business manager self. Um, but I will tell you that this is a year that I would, that I would say that just, you would, you would, I would, I think I would seriously consider, um, recommending that. Because we just don't have, it's just because this year is just completely, it's, it's so different, right? And, and you, we, we got some hopes out there, right? We don't know if it's gonna be an S for three. Let me just call it that. I don't know if they'll make up a new name or not, but, you know, we, we know that there's some other stimulus coming. We, we know, we have no idea what that means. We know that they've said 100 days, they want kids in school. What does that mean? We don't know, um, if, if it's even possible, those type of things. So I, you know, I, I don't, I think that if, you know, this would be the year that I would go against my, um, oh, I guess, training or, I don't know, just my better judgment, this would be the year to do it because I, we do have some, maybe, maybe we have some monies coming, maybe. Um, and it's just, this is a really, this is a, a year that presents a whole lot of different, um, problems than we, than we're used to. I mean, I would defer to Anne Marie, uh, obviously, when it comes to those type of statements, but I, I don't remember seeing a, a year like this with, with, with the revenue is low, is, is what I'm saying. Overall.
Yeah, Margaret. Then I think about the experience in the town of Templeton. And they were nailed for not having something in their bands. So, I mean, it's, it really is belief that if you, you know, if, if you give it all, if you give it all and then say in the middle of it, well, stop spending, what does that cost as well? But I'm talking about a big expense if you don't have something for it. So it's, it's just a matter of, um, you know, what chance people want to take. The experience from the town of Templeton was, was don't take a chance with having nothing.
Yeah, well, I, I do want to read a comment just from, uh, Mr. Curry again. He said, yep, all in Hank and Chris. Uh, we are too. I think he's speaking for the town of Templeton. Um, so whereas I do, I, I think the, the philosophical discussion is, is just that philosophical. Um, we are, I mean, really, it, it, I'm with Iran, not to have anything left just in case. You know, just goes against everything that I've ever believed in. Um, but I think if we, if, if our towns are going all in, we need to do the same. And I think that the towns will understand if we do that, if we have, you know, I, I don't know how we'd work ourselves out of it, an emergency. But it becomes a different discussion at that point. Um, but, but I, what I would like to see is, you know, what does that look like? You know, once, um, you guys have a chance to put that PowerPoint, you know, initial PowerPoint together to look at, you know, what does that truly mean? Where are we gonna make up that, you know, 300 or 200,000 dollars? You know, what are those scenarios that you have? Because now that we've, we finally got numbers, which really only came in with the last, in the last couple of days. So it's not as if you really knew what these were beforehand, then you've had a lot of time. That you'll have more time to digest. What does it mean now that we have everything? Where we might have some opportunities and, um, that are more than just, oh, maybe there's an S or three, maybe there's, there's not, I don't know.
Well, there's an S or two in the, in, and no shade here, but a good portion of that was given to the towns. We don't know what, um, strings will come attached to it as well. So I don't want to say that, that the shank, you know, the, uh, you know, our white hope is coming, you know, as here it comes. We don't know what those monies are going to be applied to.
So, um, what I'm hearing then is it sounds as if unless someone feels passionate and wants to make a motion about something, um, I'm not saying you have to, I'm just saying unless someone really wants to, um, we, it sounds like what we'd like to see is really uh, more detail at our next meeting on the 17th. To give us the couple of scenarios, to plug the numbers in, present, make your recommendation. And then we can vote and discuss then on what our baseline will be as we move forward for the hearings. Does that sound like a plan? Is there anything else? Um, you know, I'm looking at, at Anne Marie in particular. Was there anything else that you need from the committee in order to make that work from your end, you know, from the number side of things at this point?
I don't think so. I don't think so. They have all of the different scenarios. They have the line item budget. So.
Um, I think it would be prudent to get on the select board's agendas. Probably after the 17th. I don't know if it'd be possible to do it before our hearings. Um, but maybe we could look to inquire, um, about doing that, you know, pick your timeframe. Um, and we could get on their agendas just to kind of speak and, and give them what we're looking at. Um, if we can't get on the agendas, um, obviously, I know, Dr. Kazmit, you're in communication with the towns and, and can at least push out the data that we have right now and what we're looking at. And I think that discussion, and I don't know if you've been able to have the discussion yet, since again, this is all new about the S or two piece and what the commitment the governor made to the municipalities. Because I, I, I think, I think it was Anne Marie who you said you really don't see the towns turning it down. Um, but we probably should just at least inquire because they could surprise us. I don't think so, but it would be nice to hear from them that, you know, if that's available, we definitely want to take it because that'll firm that up as well, that we know what dollars will be remaining. All right. Anybody have any other questions? I know that there's lots of driveways to be snowblown. To make lunches for their kids tomorrow, although I think I may be the only one with a, a kid that needs a lunch. Um, maybe you, Jeff, I'm not sure. Oh, and you too, Chris, sorry. Uh, any other questions or comments from the committee? Well, I'll just say thank you, um, for all the attention to the detail. Emery, it's always a pleasure to sit down and, um, have a level of confidence in the information being presented without, uh, having to scratch my head because you do a very good job explaining everything. So we appreciate that. We look forward to having, uh, whatever you'll have for us on the 17th so that we can give our final approval before we move into our budget hearing. Susan, I know we probably need to post, uh, do a posting on the budget hearings in the paper. I think it's set, uh, no less than seven days beforehand. So maybe if we schedule that for 10 days, if the paper screw up, and at least it gives us a day to recover.
Okay.
So we can talk about that. I think you probably have something saved. Any, you're, you're better at that than I am. Um, and we will see everybody on the 17th. If there's anything that you want to see for the budget, just reach out directly to, you know, Anne Marie or Chris and let them know. Otherwise, we look forward to seeing what you have to present to us. And with that said, if there's nothing else, see anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Mason. Do I have a second?
A second.
And I have a second by Mr. Marks. So we will do roll call. Mrs. Kozel.
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier.
Yes.
Mrs. Robashov. I, I actually didn't hear your voice, Deb, and I do need to. I think, I think I heard her. She definitely gave a thumbs up too. Mr. Marks.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Hi.
Mrs. Trifilo.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes, oh, sorry, Mrs. Mattson, sorry.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we have unanimous to adjourn. I thank everybody once again for, um, participating and I thank the public for watching and we will see you on the 17th.